A sixty day warranty?
Well, they're gonna, they were gonna go down and look at this and take mechanic, uh, somebody that knows that particular engine and then give their opinion. If it was, uh, in good shape, now we had a figure like, uh, somebody was saying is two hundred thousand. That figure has gone down because the chief that owns that vehicle has, uh, they are gonna sell it themselves. So they are down about, uh, a hundred thousand dollars. So you have to go see it, decide what you want it, and if, uh, Mike is saying he don't wanna do that now. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes, that's correct. We were buying something that's gonna be, um, a, a problem, a m- a money pit, hard to resell, and, um, we have enough apparatuses and there's mutual aid to get us by, especially if, because we were told upfront by the fire chief that we'd have the new, if we ordered it today, we'd have a new engine by the end of the year. So we go along with what we got till the end of the year. We don't know unless we make the order. Need to contact with a salesman.
Is the chief on there?
Doesn't look like it.
No, he is not.
Alright, um. Okay. Alright, so right now.
I mean, that trip, that trip out west to Missouri's been postponed once because somebody was sick. Um, I, I, I think we need to postpone it again and do a little looking and thinking about this. Let's, when can we get a new one? Talk to a salesman, call the manufacturers. What, when can we get a new one? If we can get a new one by the end of, of this year, you know, six, eight months from now, whatever, that's what we need to do.
Okay, is there anybody, uh, that's on, uh, that's on Zoom here tonight that knows exactly how long that's gonna take? I wa- I was told it was gonna take, uh, about eighteen months.
Uh, uh, I'm, uh, this is Sheila, like, and it, it just appears to me that, uh, you all don't have enough information to go out and purchase anything. And until you have enough information, at, at, at best, I mean, to, to purchase something and, and not even know when you're gonna get it, uh, going off of what somebody said is not really, uh, a good way to operate. And it just appears to me that it should be, uh, voted down for now until the information is available to all trustees, and then they can make a decision instead of kinda asking, you know, what people, you know, might, might think. Because we might be wrong, laws and rules change all the time. But we wanna make what's best, what's gonna be in the best interest for the township. Um, especially for those, um, um, in the west part of the township that really need the tanker truck.
I agree with you, Sheila. So you would think that, like, if you're spending five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars, the salesman would be more than welcome to come out, come to a meeting and talk to us, show us what they got, and, uh, here's your turnaround time. We can, our, our, they know what their production rate's doing, and let's get the information, get it in front of all three trustees and make a decision. I agree with you.
Okay.
That's, that's, that sounds logical, because it, it does kinda s- it doesn't seem like you all have the, um, for that kinda money that you, you, I agree with, um, Sheila back. It doesn't seem like you all have.
Does that put us at risk of not having that? Do we need that, or is that gonna put a resident at risk for not having that equipment?
Well, Cox, what, uh, what kinda engines do you have running now?
Currently have, uh, two, two thousand five Rosenbauer's, those original, so it's engine fifty-nine, engine sixty-two. Um, we also have the brand-new Quick Attack, or Rescue Sixty-One is called now. They all have one thousand gallons each, twelve hundred and fifty gallons per minute pumps. Um, I, I've heard people concerned about not having, uh, enough equipment. Keep in mind that Regional Dispatch is set up with cards. Based on your answers when you call, they're going to ask questions. What you tell them is what they're going to send. So if there's a structure fire, say, on Diamond Mill Road, and the people report, "I have flames coming out the window", you're not only going to get Jefferson Township, you're going to get Trotter, New Lebanon, Germantown, Murano, Dayton, additional equipment's coming with us. So when we arrive, and even like in the Diamond Mill case, was pointed out, that New Lebanon possibly could get there before our equipment would be. They're going to start the attack, we'll get there and join them and assist. Um, so there's, there's apparatus around that'll be coming, not just ours alone. But we do have two, um, engines right now, fifty-nine and sixty-two that are operating. Uh, sixty is out of service, and then we have the, uh, the new Quick Attack Rescue that will be coming as well.
But you need reliable equipment, correct?
Yes.
Exactly. So that's, that's, you know, that's basically what part of the conversation is, the reliability of the... Because, I mean, yes, we can cut corners on costs, anybody can do that. But if there is an issue and you all don't have the right equipment, or, uh, you know, equipment that's, uh, that's reliable, then, then we have a big situation. So it does sound like maybe you all should table it, get the information that you need, and then make a decision and move forward versus, you know, being in haste, because it, it just sounds like someone's said, "Hey, this might be a great deal." Chief, in your opinion, what do, what do you, what are your thoughts? You've been listening.
Um, I was not in on this, uh, looking for this engine. I've heard about it, I've seen pictures of the specs of it. Um, it is a, I believe, a two thousand gallon tanker. And, and that's the whole thing, dispatch knows where our fire hydrants are and where they are not. So when we're en route, the engine companies, myself, the chief, we can ask dispatch, "Where's the closest hydrant?" And a lot of times, being the fact that it's two miles away, they're going to go ahead and start an additional tanker, or two, or three, or we can request it at any time. And it's called a shuttle or a water, uh, shuttle tanker operation. Where we'll have three, four, five tankers lined up down the road, and we'll bring them in, transfer the water to the engine that's attacking, move them out, send them down to the height of two, three miles away, and bring the next one in. So that's, that's a water, uh, shuttle, water sector operation, as they call it. So we're, we're quite familiar with that on how to do it. Um, again, we're operating out of one station right now, hopefully getting that other one up as soon as the remodel's done down there at fifty-nine. So we'll have crews from two different locations coming your direction when you call.
Would, uh, residents be, um, fine while the trustees take, uh, time, you know, not, not dragging their feet on anything, but actually taking time to, uh, look at, you know, some options, the options that are available to make a more informed decision?
Mr. Fletcher? Mr. Mann, can I have the floor a minute, please? Linda Rowley, two four six South Byman Mill. Can I answer Mr. Fletcher's question, since you let everyone else speak?
Go ahead.
Mr. Fletcher, we live in the western part of the township. This directly affects us, and we want the trustees. We have three thousand gallons of water available at any given time to us from Jefferson Township. We do not have enough personnel to get three thousand gallons of water to my driveway. Had they not have spent the funds on this new attack pumper, that gives us an additional thousand gallons of water. We have plenty of water in this township. New London will get in here probably before Jefferson does, because they're closer to us. And we are, my Linda's opinion, out here in the western part of the township, we would much rather see the money spent on a new piece of equipment than on a used piece of equipment, because we have enough water to cover us until we can get a new tanker.
I agree, that's where I was going with it. They should take the time, I agree with Mr. McLaughlin. They should take the time to reevaluate what they're doing and possibly purchase a new one.
Yes.
So I agree with you.
Alright, Mr. Mann, this is Bruce Rowley, and I have done the research, and you know I've been on the fire department. I have researched the internet, and this supposed used piece of equipment through three brokers, I cannot find anywhere on the internet. If you wanna do the research, there are ten equipment manufacturers in the United States. All of them have email addresses. You could start the conversation with all ten with a general question, is we're looking for a tanker. I believe we're gonna be limited to two thousand gallons, and start the conversation via email with ten different manufacturers as to their production lines, how far behind they are, because not everybody is gonna be ten months behind. Some may be six, some may be twelve. But I have hunted this used piece of equipment, and for a comparison, I found a nineteen eighties tanker that was re-chassis with a new chassis, new motor, and a rebuilt pump, thirty years old, and it was eighty-seven thousand dollars. So why did this two thousand and ten Rosenbauer drop to ninety thousand dollars by simply pulling a broker off of it? And that also, the way it's been described, would actually be a breach of contract with the brokers.
Yeah.
So you guys need to make decisions and reevaluate what's taking place. So if you wanna stop it, make a resolution to stop the purchase. And then direct someone to get on the internet and send emails to ten manufacturers and see what the production schedule is, but somebody's gotta start somewhere.
Mr. Wolf, was this, uh, it, this resolution was tabled the last meeting, so if it goes away here tonight, that will do away with this, and we have to bring a new resolution back, is that correct?
No, no, to answer your question, Mike's been correct. You passed the resolution to buy the two thousand and ten Rosenbauer engine tanker. You tabled doing an RFP for a brand-new engine that would've went out to all manufacturers so they could equally provide the same proposal based on spec.
And I felt bad about that vote. I, that bothered me a lot. We need to change that.
Right, the trustees asked for a spec, uh, from the fire chief. That, I have not seen the spec, and, and it's not produced for us tonight. So that, that resolution will go away if you're silent, and you have to start over.
Rory?
Uh, but I would recommend something. Uh, through competitive bidding, you don't wanna get into a situation where you're talking to ten manufacturers, because they're all gonna get into different side conversations, offering you an apple versus an orange. When you do looking for quotes, you do an RFP, a request for proposals with one spec, and send it out to all the manufacturers, and you're permitted to even call every manufacturer and say, "Here's our, our propos- our, uh, request for proposals, now submit." And then you can bring the salesman in on those that submit.
Okay, I agree with you, Steve.
If those don't submit, it's because they can't equally provide you what you want.
Yep.
And that cuts down on a ton of phone calls and a ton of work, and also sometimes hard feelings, because somebody may have liked one broker over another, and you trustees have to remain independent. So the RFP is what was, should've been passed last week, last meeting, not so much buying the two thousand and ten Rosenbauer. But at the same time, you had a valid reason for not doing it, or for tabling it. But I highly recommend, whatever you do from this point on, you go back and, and consider the RFP process so you stay within your purchasing policy of the township. That's all I have.
So we do not have the specifications that we were waiting on?
Okay, trustee Mann? Um, that is correct. Uh, in the last meeting, uh, the fire chief Wright said he was gonna produce that, and we had not seen it. But in going through my, I, digging in my file cabinets, I did come across, um, a list of specifications admitted, admitted by the previous fire chief Lutz. Um, and I'd like to produce that, I'll give, I'll, in fact, I'll send you and Jim a copy of that. That's a good place to start. Here, um, is a list of things that he thought was pertinent for this township to have in a new fire engine. Gives a good place to start. But we need to decide what we want, like what Steve said, and send them RFP out. So here's what you have to go to, here's what we want, and let them come back with a set of prices, and then have a salesman come and talk to us, "What is your turnaround time?" And, um, but I think we need to, uh, untable the resolution, uh, if I can find the, um... I don't, I don't, maybe Tracy can help me with that number. But, um, I'd like to make a, uh, like to, uh, make a motion to adopt a resolution to rescind Resolution twenty-one dash oh one nine, um, that addressed the, uh, ability to, gave Jefferson Township the authorized to purchase of a two thousand and ten Rosenbauer engine tanker for the amount not to exceed two hundred thousand based on a bid's successful inspection and vehicle financing established. I'm making a resolution to rescind the Resolution twenty-one oh one nine.
Alright, I'll second the motion on that one.
Wait, any questions?
Uh, Tracy, can you give Mr. McLaughlin a resolution number?
Resolution number, does he need? For the rescind, he has to have the resolution to rescind?
Yes.
Okay, yes, he does.
Twenty-one dash oh twenty-one.
Okay, if I can make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-one dash oh twenty-one, which basically rescinds Resolution twenty-one dash oh nineteen, and, um, I'll re-deriverage one more time. The Jefferson Township authorized the purchase of a two thousand and ten Rosenbauer engine tanker for the amount not to exceed two hundred thousand based on its successful inspection of the vehicle and financing established. And they got a second, I was just reading it again. Uh, we have a vote on that, please, Tracy?
Trustee Mayor?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes. So, Mr. Wolf, can you, can you inform Doug Wright that, uh, trip will not be happening Thursday?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
But I mean, this one's rescind, twenty, so it must be rescind, so, okay. The other resolution passed. Um, the other resolution you were discussing was twenty-one dash oh two oh, and that was tabled, you guys motioned a second, that he gave a motion, twenty-one dash oh two, I mean, uh, resolution number twenty-one dash oh two oh.
Now, Rory might have it in front of him. I don't have that one in front of me, 'cause somebody read the, the, just the top of that for me, please, if somebody has that one, for record?
The death sales, do you have it, Mr. Mann?
The Jefferson Township trustees authorize the fire chief and administrator to release a request for proposal for the purchase and production of a twenty-twenty-two engine tanker with specifications and requirements. Is that the one you're talking about?
Yes.
And that was, and the reason why you, you tabled is 'cause you didn't have the specifications and requirements?
Correct.
And so are you now bringing it back to vote on it? You're bringing it back on the table?
Yes.
Okay, so, so you, so you're bringing this back on the table?
And, and, and loo- of that, uh, Rory Mann, I will send you the copy of the specifications I have, I believe, from Gene Lutz. I'll send it to you and Jim McGuire also.
Okay.
And Doug Wright, so he can look at it, so he can give his two cents also. But we, that's a place to start. So, um, I guess we need a roll call on that, uh, resolution. Tracy, please.
Um, to bring back twenty-one oh twenty to the table?
Yes.
Okay, um, did you do a motion?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, adopt Resolution twenty dash oh two oh.
Dash oh two oh, twenty-one dash oh two oh.
Uh, I'm sorry, twenty, yeah, yeah, um, you're behind. Twenty-one dash oh two oh, yeah.
Mr. Mann, you want to second it or not?
I'll second it.
I have no questions.
No, go ahead with the vote.
Okay, um, roll call, trustee Mann?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, so I got one more thing while we're on this topic. Um, I'm not sure who, somebody, maybe Steve, somebody made a comment on it. Um, I was just curious, um, been a couple weeks since I've been in there. Where do we stand on the progress of Station Fifty-Nine, the one in livery to get opened up for, uh, residents? Where does that, is anything, is that at a standstill? Why is it a standstill? Why isn't that moving along? Where do we stand with the progress of Station Fifty-Nine?
I'm not, I'm not in charge of that project, Mike.
Who is?
I did not put anybody in charge. I know Mr. Mc- McGuire has had discussions with the contractor. Um, so I know there had been some preliminary work done. They have to have the architect pull permits, I have been told that. I can't answer any more question than that, because I'm not in charge of that project and have not been put in charge.
We awarded that contract to... You two voted yes on giving that contract to a, a contractor. Um, why is he not performing the contract?
You have to ask Mr. McGuire, I don't know.
I'll check in tomorrow, Mike, and see if I can find out anything about Fifty-Nine.
Thank you. Okay, so back to the agenda. I think we're to resolutions, uh...
Resolutions?
Tracy, you need that, do you need that supplemental appropriations done, correct?
Yes, uh...
I have it here, just a second, let me find it. I got it here someplace.
Do you want me to read it? Is that what you want me to do?
Well, you ain't gotta do my job if I can find it. Go ahead. Oh, here it, yeah, I think I have it here. Yeah, I got it. And what number am I using, Tracy? Twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-one dash oh two two, approving the twenty-twenty, is, is that, is that be twenty-twenty-one, Tracy?
Yes, it should be. I, I'll correct it on another one.
Approving the twenty-twenty-one supplemental appropriations totaling two thousand dollars. Uh, we talked about this in the work session. Um, the fund code, uh, is there, uh, the co- current appropriation is ten thousand, and it's Tracy's belief that, and she talked about in the work session, needs to go to twelve thousand. And I just made a motion to adopt it. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
I have no questions. Do you have any questions, Tracy?
Uh, no. Ready for a roll call?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Mann?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire? Hmm, McLaughlin?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion carries. Okay, um... Uh, you wanna do this next one, Rory? That's the, uh, hiring the zoning administrator. Do you have that paperwork in front of you?
Yes, uh, I will. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby agree to hire, um, I'm gonna have to spell this name. Justin...
Riley?
Last name? W. Riley, Riley. Last name is O.L.S.Z.E.W.S.K.I.
Oh, my gosh, do that again. Okay, O.L.S. Hold on, S.K., okay. O.S.U.N.G., okay. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, to the position of zoning administrator.
I'll second it. Did you give that, did you give an, I think you gave a number, did you, Rory? Oh, it used to be, uh, twenty-one oh two three?
Yes.
Oh, two, three?
Yes.
Or two?
Two, three, right, Tracy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, two, three.
In the, in the resolution, it says...
The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby agree to hire this person's name to the position of zoning administrator.
But within the body of the resolution, it says, like to make an offer? Yes, that one.
Like to make an offer...
For employment as Jefferson Township zoning trustee to Justin, and the rate of pay will be...
Twenty... I think it was, uh, we, we'll verify, that was twenty-four dollars.
Two.
A mar.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Yes. That's what we, we agreed at twenty-two.
Twenty-two dollars a mar.
For the offer.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
That, that, is that gonna be something you're gonna have to adjust in the budget? Because that wasn't something that would...
Let's, let Steve answer. Steve said no. We asked that question, he said, "No, there's enough money in there." And, and we're using the money that we, we were gonna rewrite, um, hmm, that book, uh, we were gonna rewrite something, we're not gonna do...
That land use plan, Mike?
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
So we'll take the money from there, Tracy?
Well, you know, you still have to do, 'cause that's the salary line. You'll have to transfer, do a, a resolution to transfer that money from that line to the salary line.
Uh, we can do that.
Okay, and then it says, okay, that's just that guy. Okay, so who made the motion, Mr. Mann, most likely?
And I seconded it.
Yeah, there's somebody blanks in here. Okay, um, where's the roll call? Roll call? Okay, number was, okay. Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Okay, is that saying motion pass?
Motion passes, yes. Thank you.
So I have a question. Well, um, will we file this resolution with, with anything? Has any description, or would this just be put in this file? Because earlier we discussed about this. Um...
The, the job description is in the, uh, advertisement, so yes, that needs to go with it. Needs to maintain with it.
So somebody gonna give me a copy of that?
Yes.
Yes. I will, Tracy.
Okay.
I think that does it for resolutions, doesn't it, Rory?
Yeah, yes, the rest we're gonna take care of and then do that at the next meeting.
So you're not gonna do anything about the ministry of assistance?
We need ta- we're gonna table that. Do we need to vote on, if we're gonna table it, do we have to vote on it?
No, you don't have, you don't have to. You just don't have to bring it to the table. You just table for another meeting.
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Okay. What about the firefighter? Another resolution you guys got later?
Uh, yeah, yeah, um, hold on, what'd I do with that? Yeah, we're twenty-four, Tracy?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion, we adopt Resolution twenty-one dash oh two four. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees authorize the township fire chief to hire probationary firefighter Christopher Kalor. He's a new hire, um, he comes good, good recommendations, um... probationary firefighter, Christopher Kalor. He's a new hire. He comes good, good recommendations. And I think he'd be a good asset to the fire department. Looking for a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have no questions. Give a roll call, please, Tracy?
Roll call, okay. Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
McLaughlin?
Yes.
All right. Have it. Okay. So, motion pass?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I didn't, I didn't think that I did have one more question, because I thought we were start looking for administrative assistant. But I do have, I do have a comment.
Yes.
And we have tasks that need to be done that was done by the administrative assistant. Currently, the administrator's doing the payroll. But as I voiced to you guys in the email, you still have to pay pension for employees. So, it behooves you guys to immediately hire somebody for that position, or to assign these, these tasks that she was doing to somebody, because this includes hiring people. This includes pension, you know, pension stuff. Just, this includes payroll. She also was in charge of all the HR stuff, like benefits, insurances. She was in charge of ordering supplies. I mean, we can't just, we have to have somebody we need, who we can go to to do this, or do we do this all on our own?
I, I don't, don't-
How is this going to get done?
Don't take the wrong, don't take the wrong position there, Tracy. We discussed that. We know that. And we have a plan to address that. I'm not, it was discussed in the executive session. I'm not free to discuss it right now. But we, we do have a plan.
Reason why I bring the one up is because pension is due for last month, we're already thirty days behind. It's due June first. We're not having a meeting before June first.
Okay. Tracy, we, we discussed that issue earlier, and I agreed to get with you, have tried to resolve that, this particular issue. And then you notified me that you, you know, you can't do it. So, I, I can't do it, because I'm getting in the, into an area where I don't really work. So, I will see what, is there anything else that can be done? But it, this, this is a problem, then we'll get done what we can.
Okay. So, Mr. Mann, the reason why I told you I couldn't do it, is because, first of all, I've been asking for over a year now for help. You guys keep putting stuff on me, putting stuff on me.